Okay, we shall come back to you. I shall not call call to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, November seventh, twenty twenty-three. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the hand up feature in teams to be automatically placed in queue. Please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak. And also, please remember that if you speak when you're not recognized or when you do not have the flow, your mics will be muted. Moving on to item one point one, land acknowledgement, opening prayer, Our Father and the National Anthem. I would now like to ask Vice Chair Agnew to please start us off with the personalized land acknowledgement. Vice Chair Agnew.
Thank you very much and through you, Mr. Chair. I would like to acknowledge and honor that the land on which we live, learn and work in Burlington, Ontario, is the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee and Huron-Wendt people. This land has been a place of gathering, learning and stewardship for Indigenous communities for generations. We recognize the enduring presence and resilience of Indigenous people and their rich cultural heritage that contributes to the fabric of our community. We are grateful for their teachings, wisdom and contributions to the land we call home. We commit to fostering understanding, respect and continuing the journey towards truth and reconciliation. And we pledge to build meaningful relationships with local Indigenous communities, center Indigenous knowledge and perspectives in our education system and work collaboratively to create inclusive and equitable spaces for all students. May we walk together on the path of reconciliation, acknowledging the past, honoring the present and striving for a future where Indigenous voices, histories and cultures are celebrated and cherished in Halton and beyond. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Trustee Deepu, could you please lead us with the opening prayer, the Our Father and the National Anthem?
Thank you and through you, Chair. Please join me in the sign of our faith in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Almighty and loving Father, Creator of heaven and earth, we praise you and adore you. You are the King of kings. We humbly ask your forgiveness for our sins. Have mercy on us, oh Lord. Tonight, as we're gathered here today for our meeting, send us your Holy Spirit to be our guide and give us the wisdom to understand every topic that we're going to be discussing. Enlighten our minds and let your love be upon us. May this meeting bring success and growth to our board. We thank you, Father, for this precious time that you have given us. All this we pray through our Lord Jesus Christ, your son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, one God forever. Amen. Please join me in saying our Our Father. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Thank you, Trustee Deepu. Item one point two, motions arising from in camera. There were no motions arising from the in camera session. We move on to our next order of business, which is the approval of the agenda, item number two. Do we have any additions, additions to the agenda and do trustees want any item removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Looking for trustee Ohern Chanada. Looking for a seconder. Trustee Powell. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Kennedy, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
How do you vote on the approval of the agenda?
In favor.
Trustee Ohern Chanada. Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
Favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Chua.
In favor.
Trustee Deepu.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
Favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries. The agenda is approved. Our next order of business is declarations of conflict of interest. Do we have any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing no conflicts, we shall move on to the next order of business, which is presentations. Item four point one. We have the multi-year strategic planning consultation report. This report was presented to the multi-year strategic planning committee on November second, where we had a great discussion and it's now being brought to the board. Director Klein, please introduce the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. And as you said a moment ago, this is an opportunity for us to, as we head toward the hopefully eleventh hour of this process, begin to see the rid of the fruits of the labor of a lot of people on the board over the last nine months or so, many in this room and many beyond. And we're very, very proud of the work that we've done. And so we have Josh here to lead us in a brief report about where we're at at this point and then point the way forward over the next month or so to its final completion. So go ahead, Josh. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Klein, and thank you to the board for this opportunity to present an update on the multi-year strategic plan consultation and development process. If I could summarize in a sentence or two what I'm going to tell you tonight that's new since our last meeting in September is that, given the sort of the feedback from this group in that meeting in September, we've gone back and consulted some other groups, sort of rounded off the robustness of the consultation reach. We've analyzed the results, we've updated them and we've drafted some recommendations, which have been in front of the steering committee and are in the process of being revised to inform the development of the new plan. So that's sort of the summary of what I'm about to share and I'll I'll spend a couple of moments taking you through some slides. My name is Josh Fulan and one of the facilitators helping the board develop this plan. I'm here with my colleague Priya Pinjani. So if I could ask that our deck be projected, I don't see an option for me to present out there. Correct myself and just bear with me for a moment as I now see the opportunity to share. One moment, please. So I trust folks are seeing my slides now. Here's our agenda for the next few minutes together. I'll give you a little bit of an update on the MYSP timeline, share the updates to the content and then that list of draft recommendations and some next steps. So we are currently in phase three of the MYSP development. We've finished the consultation period. We've done the analysis. We've written a consultation report. And we are now in the process of synthesizing the results of the consultation period and other sort of data sources, board plans and other sources of data to draft new strategic directions for the plan. And that new plan will be presented in January at a board meeting. After the presentation and the approval comes the implementation and monitoring of new plan. Since our last sort of update here at the board, we have a couple of key updates to share. One is we reworked some of the theme titles and the summaries based on feedback from the board and also from the steering committee who has been sort of essential in providing guidance throughout this process. So we've reworked some of those themes and the content that falls under them. And we also following direction from this group and the steering committee, we went back and did some additional consultations, as I said, to sort of fill out the consultation reach. So we had a session with the deanery. We had a session with the Human Rights and Equity Advisory Council. And we relaunched the survey or reworked one of the questions to really target students because we felt, or you felt, and I think quite rightly so, that that was a voice that needed to be listened to a little more deeply in the process. So since those additional consultations and the updates to the themes, we've analyzed all of the new data. We've incorporated it into the updates. There is a report that captures that. We've done all of the theme summaries now and drafted recommendations for informing the new plan, which I'll share in a moment. And this is what the new sort of, you know, engagement by the numbers infographic looks like. The big difference in this in this sort of infographic is the students, the number of students have gone up greatly in this image to sort of capture that student voice, which we felt was something that needed to be captured and now is. And here we have a bit of a breakdown by students, parents and staff in the elementary and secondary panel. This is only the survey respondents. So if I go back to this graphic, this captures all of the consultation methods. So facilitated sessions, pop-ups, surveys, et cetera. This is just the survey. So it's just one one element of the consultation, but important to show sort of the disaggregation of it, I think. So you see the reach through the elementary and secondary panel. And then in the next slide, you can also see the reach through municipality. And this was something that we heard was important to round off as well. And we have a much better distribution through the different municipalities and the different panels and the different responding groups. Rather than then go through all of the themes in the report, we're just going to share a couple of key updates to the themes. And these are the major themes that were updated. Most of the new data is from students. And I think you'll see that the comments reflect this. So in the theme of academic excellence, many of the new student comments spoke to a desire for teachers who are fair, accountable and allow for freedom and flexibility in their instructional practice. In the theme of Catholic faith, some comments spoke to an emphasis on the need for active participation of staff in liturgical celebrations, more presence of clergy in schools and teachers sharing their lived experience of faith in order to be sort of bravely Catholic is the way one of the comments put it in this sort of in the context that we live in in twenty twenty-three. And then in the theme of equity, diversity and inclusion, some of the new comments spoke to acknowledgement of the changing demographics of the region with increasing minorities or racialized groups and a need to sort of recognize that and address that through various methods such as hiring practices so that folks in classrooms see people at the front of the classroom or in leadership positions that look like them. That was certainly something that came out strongly in those comments. For the theme of health and wellbeing, many student comments spoke to a sense of kindness and friendliness among their peers in their learning community. In spite of some instances of bullying, there was sort of a strong sense of belonging, I would say. It was a good way to describe that update. And that rounds off the updates. I'll just go into the draft recommendations. A bit of a note on our process. So the themes from the consultation record, so you just saw some updates to a few of them. I think there are nine in total. They are not really meant to be a one-to-one translation into new strategic directions for the new plan. They are certainly a major part of what informs the new strategic directions, but there's more that goes into the funnel there. So this sort of flow chart or graphic captures that. What informs the new multi-year strategic plan is a major part of the consultation results, which I've just described the updates to staff and trustee guidance in this forum and in the steering committee, other board data and plans, of course. And then our experience having done this before a few times in similar contexts. And that together will inform the new multi-year plan. For the draft recommendations, we've sort of grouped them into three different categories and there are too many to present here this evening. They're in the report for further reading as needed, but I think I'll just highlight maybe the first one in each of these categories. So the first category is structure and design of the new MYSP. So this refers to kind of the layout, the graphical content, the visualizations. And there was a sort of a clear message around the structure and design to keep the plan high level and concise, really focus on essential priorities or goals and ones that don't overlap or duplicate each other. That was certainly something that came out strongly about the structure for the new plan. In terms of the content, very clearly we've heard it across groups to continue the focus on academic excellence, high standards, quality of program and instruction. These things are central to the board's identity and sort of in their DNA. And these are things that are essential to continue in the new plan. And then in terms of implementation, monitoring and communication, there was a clear message to ensure the plan looks towards the future. That growth change and also the unknown, you know, things, there are certain things that are uncertain. So the plan should learn and adapt through its implementation, not simply set targets and define outcomes centrally, but really be something that learns through implementation and has some adaptive capacity to it. So those are a very sort of a high level summary of some of the recommendations that we are working on. We got some feedback from the steering committee last week. We're still kind of digesting that. Some of the updates have been applied to this list, but we're still working through those. So this is very much a work in progress in terms of the recommendations to inform the new plan. And then just a couple of closing slides to sort of round off what an MYSP is. It's meant to be an organizational compass. It sets commitments that are met in other plans. It asks really big, important questions like how can you create a Catholic learning culture? What do you want for students who enter your schools and what brought staff to the work of education? And it does answer some really big questions too. It should answer to anyone who looks at it, what drives the Halton Catholic District School Board and all of its schools, you know, what are the board's priorities and values? How is it improving and how does it monitor and communicate that ongoing improvement? So that's what the plan does. And in terms of next steps, we are currently in this phase three, the synthesis, the development and approval. A way to think about it is the sort of the very early in the new year. And then after we are gone presentation, trustees, do we have questions for Mr. Fulan and team?
I don't see any hands up here. So yeah, trustees have been through this in the meeting, which we had last week. So once again, thank you, Mr. Fulan and our team for the wonderful collaborative collaborative work which was done along with our staff. We are at the home stretch right now. So we look forward to the final report being submitted in January and taking it from there. So thank you so much for presenting to us and all the work done thus far. Thank you. For this, we shall move on to our next order of business is delegations. There was one declined delegations. We had one delegation decline and all trustees have been informed. And we received a copy of the declined delegation request on twentieth October, twenty twenty-three. The request was of an operational nature and then we had to put an offer to add the information as correspondence, but we did not hear back. So with that, we shall move on to our next order of business, which is consent agenda items. The following items have been agreed upon at the agenda approval to stay on the consent agenda. Item six point one, action item, six point one point one is the minutes of the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting and six point two are noted items, which is business arising, miscellaneous and miscellaneous items. There will be a single motion to approve the action items and there will be no discussion. There will be no discussion on the noted item as well. I will now read the motion resolved at the Halton Catholic District School Board, approve consent agenda item six point one point one on November seventh, twenty twenty-three as submitted. May I have a ask for mover, please? Moved by trustee Ohern Chanada. Looking seconded by trustee Agnew. I shall not take this to a recorded recorded vote. Item number six. Trustee Ohern Chanada.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
Favor.
Trustee Kelly.
Favor.
Trustee Chua.
In favor.
Trustee Deepu.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Trustee.
Favor.
Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries. We shall now move on. We do not have anything on the approval of the minutes, business arising. Our next order of business is action items. We do not have anything there. We move on to item number ten, which is the staff reports, ten point one, proposed twenty twenty-four facility renewal projects. Superintendent Merrick, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, we have the twenty twenty-four facility renewal projects for review. These projects are for completion in the upcoming summer of twenty twenty-four. As trustees will know, HCSB has some of the best school facilities in the province. And one of the ways we maintain those conditions is by proactively investing in our facilities and doing these major renewal projects. So for summer twenty twenty-four, we have six schools slated for major renewal projects. The first being Guardian Angels School in Milton, looking at the chiller replacement there. That's kind of beyond its useful life and on its way out. So we need to replace the chiller there. At Holy Family School in Oakville, a fairly big overhaul of that school doing LED lighting, overhauling the HVAC system and then some school refresh and aesthetics there as well. At St. Andrews School in Oakville, replacing the roof at that school. St. Francis of Assisi in Georgetown, another major renovation to the school, LED lighting, renewing the HVAC system, refreshing aesthetics as well as a roof replacement there. And then finally, at Holy Trinity Secondary School in Oakville, replacing the building automation system there as well as a turf replacement and track resurfacing. And the sixth project, which isn't on your list, but was actually approved last year at this time, is the St. Francis Xavier turf replacement. Because the dome collapsed there around Christmas time last year and then we've replaced it, we actually deferred that turf replacement into the future. We were able to hold pricing on it though. So it's already approved by trustees, but letting you know now, we're planning to do it next summer, now that the dome is in place. When the dome comes down for the summertime, we'll go back and do the turf replacement there. So with that, the total cost or the estimated cost for these projects with the contingency and professional fees is estimated at approximately nine point two five million. This would be funded from available capital sources in the Capital Reserve, of which we have about thirteen point eight million dollars available right now. So we leave ourselves a little bit for other emergency projects as well. And we will be doing other smaller projects that fall below the threshold to bring to board. Things like universal washroom, some accessibility projects, and there may even be some other minor kind of flooring and painting projects in schools, but those fall below the threshold for bringing to board. So so I propose that at the next meeting, staff will bring two resolutions for consideration to the board. The first to approve the projects listed in the report and the second to approve the budget as shown in the report as well. So happy to take any questions that trustees may have on these five slash six projects slated for summer of twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustees, do we have questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Superintendent Merrick, for your report. With that, we shall move on to our next order of business, which is information items. Item eleven point one. Item eleven point one, student trustee update. Student trustees, do you have student trustees, do you have a report to present? Go ahead.
Thank you and through you, Chair. So tonight we are presenting our monthly student trustee report. I will be presenting the achieving section of the report. So within our schools, there are many facets of academic achievement being fulfilled. So one example of this at this point in the year are math competitions. So many schools have begun to hold different competitions from Caribou Math and also University of Waterloo. So for example, at Loyola, where I attend, the math department held its first ever Caribou Cup contest and the top three students from the both senior and intermediate divisions scored the top five percent of all participants in the world, which is a huge accomplishment. And a lot of other students are also going to be participating in the upcoming Canadian senior and intermediate math contest written by the University of Waterloo on November sixteenth. So we wish the best of luck to all participants. We really appreciate them for going out there and furthering their academic achievement through these competitions. We know that they will do great. Also, to be as student trustees, we had the privilege to attend the Ontario Student Trustees Association Fall General Meeting in Toronto, which occurred from October nineteenth to twenty-second in Toronto. We were able to connect with student trustees from all over Ontario and learn about OSS's three new pillars for the year, which include learning, leverage and legacy. We got to connect with other student trustees specifically from our Golden Horseshoe region and talk about regional priorities. There's also many opportunities for professional development such as learning about skills such as public speaking, event planning, as well as learning more about Indigenous issues. We also were able to receive a session from Patrick Daly, the president of OCSCA and converse about the strengths, challenges and the role of the Catholic student trustee. We also had to hear a keynote by the Minister of Education, Stephen Leche, which was a pleasure to hear and to learn about the ministry's priorities for this year. So that's my part. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee McGuire. And as for like the believing section, as she mentioned, the OSTA ECO Fall General Meeting was a wonderful opportunity for us to meet student trustees from various Catholic and public district school boards across Ontario. So throughout the weekend, we engaged in meaningful conversations pertaining to Catholic and public education and brainstormed many ways in which we could collectively work together towards creating a positive impact in both the provincial and board levels. Our use of different dialogues such as the interfaith dialogue between our public and Catholic boards allowed us to positively enhance our conversations with other trustees while shaping our perspective through a Catholic lens. Additionally, as Lauren mentioned, our session with Patrick Daly was an amazing opportunity for us to gain a deeper insight into Catholic education and the significance of our role as Catholic student trustees. We were able to receive professional development that was steered towards aspects of student leadership and engagement through a Catholic perspective, which again enabled us to develop our skills accordingly to serve our students in our board right now. And furthermore, we were also able to And furthermore, we were also able to connect with our student senators from all of our schools to learn about any special events that were happening at their schools, which promote our Catholic values and social teachings. So we're happy to share that many schools across the board, as you may already know, have conducted community community events that encourage our students to engage in community service. The Crusading for Canes event that is currently being held at or it was being held at Assumption C S S. The Shoebox Donation Initiative held at Corpus Christi and the Thanksgiving Food Drives, which were held at various schools like Saint Ignatius of Loyola, C S S, Saint Francis Xavier's, Christ the King, St. Cetera, and Notre Dame. And these are some of the ways through which our students are able to participate in acts of service that acknowledge the needs of others in our community on a day-to-day basis. In addition, Bishop Redding's eco team was also fulfilling their call to be stewards of the earth as they conducted a community cleanup and preparation for gardening for the next spring. So and they also managed to hold an electronic waste campaign where they collected over a hundred and fifty-five pounds worth of old devices, which is really good for us to see that our students are being encouraged to continually participate in a community service on a day-to-day basis and to fulfill their call as Jesus called us to do.
Perfect. And for our belonging section, our student senators in our H C D S B schools have been doing a fabulous job in fostering an inclusive and belonging environment for all of our student members across our H C D S B throughout the month of October. So in grade eleven, Holy Trinity mentors hosted their annual pizza pizza lunch with their grade nine mentees in order to help them transition into grade nine within the secondary school community. And furthermore, during our October eighteenth Student Senate meeting, the Student Senate Special Education Subcommittee passed their Best Buddies survey proposal. Will they will be sending out a survey to all secondary school best buddies groups? And with the data collected, the Student Senate Special Education Subcommittee will cultivate a report highlighting any discrepancies within the best buddy program and create recommendations on how we can uplift and support all best buddies programs across our board. Additionally, the Special Education Subcommittee hopes to work with Superintendent Jack Caldera and C I A K throughout the data collection and report creation process.
Thank you, student trustees. Trustees, do we have questions for students? Student trustees. I see no hands up. So thank you so much for presenting your report and bringing student voice to the table here. With that, we shall now move on to item eleven point two, which is the director's report. Director Klein, please present your report.
Thank you, Chair. Tonight's report is brief and again, highlighting through the three areas of folks in our board, some things that are worth celebrating and worth marking. In terms of achieving, believing, and belonging, really the focus is on some STEAM events, administrators retreat that's coming up, and then again, just to highlight some noteworthy days as we do every month. STEAM, I think, is something that is highlighted at our board, something that we're very proud of, something that resonates through all our schools and our grades. I know this is very tiny font for on a big screen, but a quick review of it would show that not only is there a wide array of events that are varied and exciting, but also they run the gambit from kindergarten to grade twelve, usually in that middle area of grades of five and into high school and reflecting again different areas and going through the year up until the end of May. It's important to remember that our Catholic schools are led by Catholic leaders and that it is important that they have the opportunity to return to the well, as it were, and to reflect and to pray and to work together in terms of refining their their faith. And so on November the fourteenth and fifteenth, as this board has done for many years, not necessarily on the fourteenth and fifteenth, but they are going to be working and enjoying an administrator's retreat that's held in Milton. And will be led this year by a clinical psychologist and a woman of faith named Dr. Jody Carrington, who hails from Alberta, Alberta. Theme is particularly resonant as people have sort of stumbled out of COVID and feel felt many cases disconnected and fragmented. Theme is connectedness in an increasingly fragmented world. And as always, this will be highlighted by the celebration, the pinnacle of our prayer, the mass. Noteworthy days are replete. Of course, this is a month in terms of our faith where we mark those who have passed on. So of course, we have key religious days within that. And of course, there's a lot in terms of veterans and celebrating and marking and honoring the sacrifices that were made. And in light of the conflict in Ukraine, of course, it's highlight of of the Memorial Day on the fourth Saturday of November as well, and that leads us to Advent, which really is at the start of December, but the end of this timeline that I've noted here. So if there are any questions, be glad to respond.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustees, do we have questions for Director Klein? Maisha, you have a question? Okay.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just actually a comment. I just wanted to add to Director Klein's report that the Corpus Christi Longhorns are in the football playoffs tomorrow for the senior team. So this evening, while I represent many schools in Burlington, go Longhorns. So just wanted to put that out there. I'm sure we will all be collectively praying for their success. So just wanted to add that. So go Longhorns.
Thank you, trustee Paul. Do you have a hands up?
Yeah, I just have a quick question just regarding those noteworthy days. Are you as a board, are we honoring those and celebrating those? Is there something we can help promote them?
Director Klein?
She just left. So you saw her leave and then you answered that? Almost all of those days are days that we mark through certainly through our social media. And I think in terms of schools themselves, they would highlight them as as appropriate and as the passion would be reflected in their teachers and their staff. So look at any in particular, but I think they would all be certainly marked in terms of social media and in terms of of the connectedness, I guess, to curriculum and other areas. But these are ones that we've identified as a board as ones that we would want to note.
Then just follow up.
Follow up, sure. Great.
For the bullying awareness week, if there are stuff that also we as trustees can help promote, is there anything going on?
Director Klein?
I know the schools are working hard to.
Yeah, I know the schools, if you check their sites, their newsletters, et cetera, there's a lot going on. That's been something that has been a priority in the province of Ontario for probably going on over well over fifteen years, perhaps more than that. So I think those would be things that could be promoted and responded to either by promoting through social media or engaging with the schools with regard to that. I know Superintendent Cordero, who's bailiwick is at, is not. Here's another assignment tonight. But I I think that need to respond to bullying, to prevent bullying through pro-social strategies is is never-ending, and I would do I would encourage trustees to do whatever they could to respond and to promote that.
Thank you, trustee. Thank you, trustee Paul. Thank you, Director Klein. I see no other hands up. So we shall move on to our next item. Eleven point three, O C S T A update. Trustee Ohern Chanara, please present your report.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. It's my privilege and my honor as your Region Thirteen, O X T A directory director to share what's going on at O X T A. So under the first column, advocacy, O X T A submitted their two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four finance brief to the Minister of Education on October the tenth. You can find a copy of that brief on the O X T A website by clicking on the advocacy tab and then selecting briefs. In this second, in this session, you'll be able to access all of the briefs dating back to two thousand and one. There's a speaker series that's very exciting. It's tomorrow night, actually, at six thirty. O X T A is hosting the Catholic Education Leadership Speaker Series. Again, tomorrow at six thirty, this virtual event will feature Linda Stott, who is a retired director of education for the London District Catholic School Board, who was one of the laypersons participating in the Sixteenth General Assembly of the Synod of Bishops in Rome this October. Linda was selected as one of seven laypeople from North America. She was nominated by His Excellency Bishop Ronald Fabro based on her extensive knowledge of the Synod, her service to the Diocese of London, her achievements as a leader in Catholic education and goodness. So that sounds very exciting. In the meetings in Rome this October, the first of two sessions of the Synod of Bishops. Participants will be meeting to discern what it means to be a listening church, examining the synod's themes of communion, participation, and mission. And we look forward to learning more about the Synod through Linda's experiences as a participant. The length is about ninety minutes in total, with sixty minutes dedicated to a formal presentation and a further thirty minutes set aside for audience questions. There is no charge. I did put a link in everyone's package, but you do have to register. So if you click on the link, I tested, it does work. You need to register there. It will be recorded and made available later. So if you have any more, if you want more information about Linda or O X T A conversations, please refer to the October sixteenth edition of the O X T A News Wire, which can be found on the O X T A homepage. And lastly, two thousand and twenty-four, we have our Catholic Trustee Seminar, January nineteenth to the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Some highlights of the actual theme is our stewards of the promise and some highlights to share. The topic of Friday morning's keynote address is advocacy and communication consideration for Catholic trustees and will be delivered by Neil McCarthy, who is the Director of Public Relations for the Archdiocese of Toronto. The committee has confirmed that one of the workshops will be on the topic of artificial intelligence, K to twelve implications. And Saturday morning, following Eucharistic celebration, we will be welcoming Cadmus Delorme, former chief of the Cowas First Nation to speak, which we heard speak in Saskatoon this year. So so following any questions, please. If you have any questions or concern, as always, please reach out to me. I'm there for you. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ohern Chanara. Trustees, do we have questions? Seeing none. Thank you, trustee Ohern Chanara, for your presentation, and we shall now move on to item eleven point four. School drinking water lead content test results, two thousand and twenty-three. Superintendent Merrick, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, we have the drinking water test results for two thousand and twenty-three. So as trustees may know, the province imposed drinking water testing protocols for schools back in two thousand and seventeen, and the board strictly follows those testing requirements. So since the inception of the program in two thousand and seventeen, we've tested over three thousand fixtures across the board. For two thousand and twenty-three, we did a number of tests across all of our schools. So every school had at least one spot that was required for testing as part of the the two thousand and twenty-three requirements as part of the new Ontario regulation. For two thousand and twenty-three, we had one exceedance, and that was a reading of eleven micrograms per liter versus the threshold of ten micrograms per liter. And that was on a bottle filling station at Assumption Secondary School. It's a little curious. It's a it's a new bottle filling station. So it was actually installed fairly recently during the the renovation that happened at Assumption through two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. But either way, when we get an exceedance, we take the guidance from Halton Public Health as to the remedy. And they recommended daily flushing of the fixture for the next twenty-four months. And then on top of that, we went ahead and replaced the fixture as well and retested it, and it passed on its on the on the retest. So either way, we're now compliant with the regulation for another year and looking at very good results across all of our facilities. So happy to take any questions that trustees may have on the drinking water test results for two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Merrick? Seeing none. Thank you, Superintendent Merrick, for presenting your report. We shall now move on directly to our next order of business is open question period. Director Klein, do we have any questions submitted for tonight?
Not that I'm aware of. No.
Thank you, Director Klein. We shall now move on to item number fifteen. In camera, we do have to go in camera because unfinished items. May I ask for a mover to move into camera? Trustee Ohern Chanara.
I can second it.
Trustee Kelly, seconds.
Yeah.
Thank you. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none. Motion.